Pretty, pretty bad.
No, it's on.
All right, okay. All right, everybody, thank you for being tonight. And I'd like to go home to establish every kind of form, starting with Joe.
Here.
For me.
Here.
John.
Here.
Oe4.
Here.
I'm here as well. We officially have a forum. John has been meeting in progress.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Joe, could you ask us about our equity framework and?
I'd be happy to. The VASD Educational Equity Framework here in the Verona Area School District. Our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and be a healthy, self-fulfilling mind. To meet this mission, the Verona Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities in power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. And then the Hochup Land Acknowledgement is there are currently twelve tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Hochup Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we begin our day, we honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you so much. Uh, pretty good at the attendance for tonight. Any questions? Here you go. Is there a motion to back to like to go?
No.
Motion from John, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Joe, I'll favor second by the eye.
On the eye.
Thank you so much. And with that, we will be right into your use of your name. I think we're doing this a minute, isn't it?
It does.
It was a one hour. Okay, sorry. But.
This is in the category of my head. I've had things that I say this time, it's still calendars. I thought it was. Good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to present one of our most important topics, which is holding for personnel that serves the service of our Verona School District. And before we do that, we want to do a couple of things to acknowledge our, our last syllable line of four on this day. First, I agree that really works in service of our students on a daily, monthly basis, day and night, as well as we know that even before the pandemic, there was a need for continuous support and reinforcement and those supports to. More sure that that's our, that's our product. So on a screen, maybe it's, it's like, oh, it's really, we want to make sure that we fully show appreciation for our work and service. Uh, and we're able to have all the pictures of. Yes, we've got all the pictures of all of our amount of sites. And so we just wanted to give them a shout out, probably for work on this day. Secondly, on November third, Verona School District engaged in. And I don't want to just say the question about there's a, it's just a phenomenal experience for the culture of Verona School District, but there's a line to our commitment that we put in place for three years now to begin with. A kind of failing, then it's a collaboration as a, that's kind of where we were on our way to trying to build structures where we continue to elevate the value of every person in our organization and really hold true to our stance that every staff member, no matter what your role is as an educator. We also have to recognize that former previous professional developments had not always gone to the same status. Change that stance this year. And we're so thankful to our team of leaders in my law, because I'm speaking about it, I'm not going to bear credit for the work of so many in our organization that worked so hard to put together a, a learning collaboration and experience. And I think there is not one person in Verona who should be, might get better as an educator based on that experience, that value. Um, I want to take this only to acknowledge the VSD Birds team, which is comprised of Dr. Hawkins, Marsha Bird, Aaron Beretta, Janine Venus, Rita Mortensen, Sidney Peach, Laura Markberg, Martin, Martin Fekrasolou, Jason Ubo, and David Van Ooster. Uh, that was the core committee that, uh, that designed the INC, that we had dozens of organizations that set up multiple capacities to ensure considering and including our, our community facilitators and all the problems that we created experience and meaningful experience for, uh, no matter what your job title was, there was something in particular you learned. And if you wanted to be told to do something new that was outside of your, your job title, that was okay as well. Um, we, as part of our strategic framework, the authorities basically accepted and helped to help design and implementation. Uh, we speak to the general public on Verona, and the biggest strand of that is adult learning. And I don't want to consider it a whole field of dreams, but it really did come. And as you've seen, Oe4 today, they've come to Verona School District, and it's our responsibility to maintain this place where we want to stay. And it's a place like Florida, or, or one of the most key reasons why people will stay in Verona School District. They know the value of the time, the spaces that they're tied, as a family professional. And we're going to be able to allow them the space to collaborate and to grow, and let that crack. And so we just said thank you to everyone on the, on the team. And we wanted to show a quick video that kind of highlights, just a quick snapshot of what some of our volunteers.
I am very old. I've been in the district for more than twenty-five years. This is the first PD that has met so many needs. It's encompassing to everybody. I love it. Thank you.
Our first class was for SEAs working with technology and develop using AI, which I had never used before. So that was exciting. I think it's fabulous that Verona School District invested in its employees today to let us have this day to focus on our wellness.
It was very informative. My first question was with student voices, and that was great to hear what students, not only from our district, but from other school districts around the state county, what they would like to see change or different policies. They would just like adults that they connect with, to see them in a different light or hear them, what they're truly telling us.
And it was fantastic. Excellent presenters and a whole different way of thinking and a mindset shift. Very much my love.
So good. I went to a Mary Gardens session, you know. Thank you for building a participation strategy for classrooms. And then I went to a picture book session, about how to incorporate workshops daily in the classrooms. And for me as a librarian, that's my privilege.
So I'd like to thank Mercy and Karen for putting the video together. We all wanted to make sure that the board saw today, we all continue to, we were doing a bit of that, but on social media, make sure that our rest of our community also understands what this investment in kind goes for our educators. The data that you see is, uh, I'll be, something I'll be back. I have access to radio in point nine. Uh, I'm going to be, uh, ready to have nine or eleven days. And we're able to help people with their different, this proportional schedules, so they can have a better day to share with you and the students. And so we are, uh, we also did an exit survey that we will be happy to share the data, the initial data, the feedback from the exit survey. It was really representative of very, very similar feedback around. Film value as a staff member, opportunity to grow, people learning, finding out to be a better educator. So again, we're thankful to the team, uh, thankful that we continue to place strategies here that are aligned where not just the only, the only, but a place that verbalizes our intent for improving, judging, taking, uh, that staff, that we're placing our effort. Uh, we, we call it a success, we future.
I think we'll take a look at the calendar, but I would like to. The earnings report was incredible. I remember often that word, um, to be able to do the stat, the stats, uh, what killed them and sort of done with the data, which is the things. And it killed, but these days are always challenging, you remember, when it comes to child care and, and, and they are. Pretty young, this, uh, investment in stat, I think it was an investment in students. And thank you, certainly, for all that you have, and something that was available with this separate thing directly kind of in the classroom. That really excited, really really excited to see it. It can be a very confident.
Also, and another comment, just from a parent perspective, in the interim states, just another thank you to the work of the teachers and others in the district that preparing students for these supremacist things. Because I saw a noticeable difference in one of my own kids in terms of their own preparation and engagement that day from, from other years. And it, I, at least my personal experience was it was really a successful and amazing mistake for my kids. And that's thanks to the preparation of their teachers.
Yeah, we were very, like, we heard the feedback from our community, our, the mixed feelings, and, and there was no shining light from the beginning. There's an area that we, we're going to execute this, and we need to keep that in mind, and that, that stronger, uh, at it. And we took the feedback and as the, uh, organization that finds itself in change improvement, uh, took the feedback, our to do where we missed the mark and had, but we still have some opportunity, just an additional kind of senior work ethic. And I think what I want the community and the board also, you know, to, to understand is, is just, you, it's if they want to work on the front end, that's if they want to work on the back, because you guys have that as well. That opens up time and, you know, so it's not a place that you just probably use the time. And really showing that our students have a, a meaningful experience that you can, that requires us, and, uh, really, we can show that the level of rigor was met expectation very other side, so we can, from, from this group, which is, you know, where, where. So I appreciate the feedback. You did. And so in the calendar, survey, obviously, we just asked a question about this awareness, uh, specifically on, on this edge, that you want to know how to be made. Uh, if this, if this needs to mark, or there's a, a representation of, of your discipline, something to be committed, like the, the parts, the, the, that's something that you have to know. And whether you're a content holder, what you learn, or for us to ask a question today. My wild expression, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think we should go over it, and then we'll, we'll, like, the Monday after. So, so should you bank that, and we will, um, go on our, on, we'll be based off of that.
So the, so there's help?
So they don't have.
So how, um, second, um, what is it posted?
Those is on the sixteenth, that gives, the sixteenth, we will see that, uh, go on, maybe eleven seventeenth, and then be part of the calendar presentation before. All right. So that post back to so the situation, which I'm running for, and the question is all. Right now, I'd like Michelle and Chad up to the, we'll take it to the presentation.
I'm a little calm, all I'm calling, maybe it's a few today. This is still like.
Arriving in the dark does that to you a little bit?
I think it works out because.
Well, this is exciting work, so I hope you're all super excited by it.
Great, uh, it's here.
Just for the record, this is a open meeting. Normally, we, we try to talk about all of this, it's an open meeting. There's a volleyball, thankfully, as soon as it started, or fight just started.
All right. Doctor, do you want to?
Absolutely. So you're heading on your, you're on your turn. So OE4, uh, when you think about who we are as an institution, and we're here to serve the students, but we can't, and don't do that without, and we commit a stat that, the board of education is like, please, uh, help the administration, our Congress, to, to have a high level of staff, uh, that we have positions filled, that are getting proper, uh, feedback. And most importantly, there's a culture where our staff feel valued and want to stay in Verona School District. And OE4 is our monitoring board that provides clear evidence to board our education, and we put the mark, and showing that our, our, our crucial personnel are able to deliver the amount of that approach to the student. We also know and recognize that, uh, while it's not talked about as much anymore, there is still a teacher short expressed about that. That we definitely make various strategic moves and that we're intentionally showing that we have any position to fill while also holding high to the expectation of, of, you have to be highly qualified. And you have to be at the goal. Uh, we, while we say that we, we don't have an issue of where you are on your faculty journey, definitely is beyond it. And if you're not willing to be on the journey, then Verona School District, obviously, very frankly, doesn't have this space. It's, it's, it's not, but that is, we are hold ourselves to have high levels, and we have to be, and we're, and we're able to be able to truly provide, uh, service to the, to our students and hold true to our mission. You know, even when you're on a journey, I can be more true to our mission. But we still, with those high expectations of not qualifying, and we still are in great leadership staffing lines, and through community, and we showing these, uh, we showed simple argument, and that's for the place, a clear high expectation of our order of education and experiences that we saw, uh, and we can show that our, our, and that we're, that we're, that we're cultural cooperation. Mondays are a problem, you know, when you talk to these staff, and they're very, 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 kind of people, and, and, you know, work to, to, to. And so we're trying to be able to provide evidence of that, hopefully enough to discussion to ask, you know, on, on our journey, and you know, leadership moves. And also, just for the publicly thing, uh, Michelle Hay, that's the leader of our, 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 our resources, uh, department, as a executive director, with a cabinet member in this department, uh, for her continued work, uh, in this area. She continues to serve through the, the, the penetration, she has, she has. And she loves, loves to do the.
And I'll say a few to you, and the board as well, because the work that I do can't be done without your support. And for removing those barriers to allow me to be able to support our readers. So this is truly a collaborative conversation, and we're all in this together, and we all do something amazing to make sure that we can do this. OE4 is a celebration tonight. I have to say, even though we are very tired because it's dark outside, it is truly a celebration of the amazing work that we can do. What you will see as we go through, um, the slide deck is I'm going to talk a little bit about leadership groups that we will be able to do this year, that were clearly working successfully for OE4. And also to think forward, and what are those things that we should be doing next year and the following year to ensure that we are meeting your needs, the needs of our community and our fellows and our staffers. OE4.1 ensures that the superintendent will maintain, or gets an organizational structure that positively impacts the ability of staff to responsibly perform your job duties and to work in environments characterized by professional support leaders. What you heard earlier about November third reiterates that, but specifically, we have indicators both side of those pieces that kind of funnel in all the work that happens. So we can proudly say that we have surveyed staff on culture and climate, and that at least sixty percent of our staff responded that there's a positive culture. We also know, um, and we surveyed all our new hires to check in with them, to make sure that their first ninety days has been successful. At least seventy-five percent of our new staff have completed those surveys. And we are looking at the survey results and monitoring what we are doing for our new employees to make sure that they have a really good experience. So this is beyond just surveying, this is also analyzing their feedback and making changes. Same with the exit surveys. Um, we ask that everyone relatively leave his signs to complete that exit survey. We have over fifty percent of that participation, and we spent a lot of time this summer actually looking at that data to really figure out how we're going to engage people to stay or change some of our practices and processes to allow folks to feel a good. OE4.2 ensures that no person is employed by the district without first clearing their background check. Very simple task behind the scenes. All employees during their, um, kind of onboarding process between when we give them the offer letter, and when they start with us, have to go through a federal background check that checks nationally a variety of things. It is everything that hits their record. So anything that has been charged in business, charged found guilty, sexual offender, all the way down to driving through a stop sign. And we review those results to ensure they're in alignment with our expectations and some laws. And if they're past, that they work with us, if they're in red flags, we have a conversation with them, understand more, and make decisions based on that. Very similarly, on 4.3, we do the exact same thing for volunteers. Volunteers are those that have unsupervised parenting behaviors. It could be parents on field trips where they are with a group of kiddos. It could be someone who is tutoring a kiddo, maybe in the weather. All of our volunteers also go through a very similar background check process. Separately, we also have val, uh, visitor, I'm sorry, visitors go through, um, a quicker check, but everyone that walks into our building has been run through at least a very basic check to ensure that they're safe to be around our kiddos and our kiddos are safe. We have also trained our secretaries and our leaders on this, and all our employees sign up annually that they understand those visitor and volunteer requirements. This year, we also built out a field trip form in collaboration with some people on Chad's team, and have built in some of those processes there too. So as folks are taking their kiddos on field trips, that volunteer and visitor background check process is built in. OE4.4 ensures that we will only select highly qualified and the best student candidates for our positions. And this is, um, the bread and butter of what we do to ensure we are meeting the best candidates. With that, we, um, interview all of our candidates and ensure that there are these two reference checks, probably two. All candidates have at least one equity-based condition to pass. That is in an in-person interview. We also ask one in we can, but we also ask one in we're not. And we have trained our leaders and our interview teams to prioritize the response to that question as a key factor. If someone moves forward, they may interview process to be quite relevant, just have a point. Because again, just like, I really need to be mature. OE4.5 talks about actively recruiting employees to reflect the diversity of our candidates, of our student population. I want to dig into this a little bit. This is our first year that we're employing young people. With that, it is specifically about learning on candidate. There are recent lawsuits and changes in the public sector about hiring or only admitting people of color to universities. And we know we cannot hire based on gender, race, ethnic, or gender characteristics. What we can do is increase our candidate's goals, or our co-candidate, so that as we have more diverse candidates, we know we will hire more diverse people. So that is the indicator that we have set up. And what we can see between last year and this year, based on voluntary responses for our questions, and have increased our ethnicity, our gender, and our BIPOC, race, gender. You will also see where are we, where we are publicly costing all of our jobs. We're also really strategic, because last year, I believe, is upcoming year, I'm again, going to be a, to ensure that we're decreasing, or increasing the diversity of our candidates based on the players that participate. 4.6, the superintendent will administer clear personnel rules and procedures for employees. The HR team is always in collaboration with our leaders and our employees and staff that work with us to regularly understand all of the reasons why it's important. What you will see here are some really critical pieces. We strategically changed and made a conscious decision this last year to translate those, if not all, HR-related communications to staff to make sure that they're translated. That is a clear change. We look forward to doing some additional pieces. Someday, it would be great to have our entire handbook translated. That's something that must be really, really good. But we want to make sure that everyone understands the limits that we have. We also want to make sure that we're meeting the BABA and VESPA cooperative to move out those pieces of changes for our handbook, but also communicating those pieces in a way that celebrates everyone through that process. And so you've heard before, and we continue to just say that we have those strong relationships with our union leaders, and I want to recognize our clarity for that, for fostering that, and recognize our union leaders for our vision. OE4.7 ensures that the superintendent will effectively handle complaints at their expense. This year, we will see in our results that we have had a couple of successes. We've now been able to routine, and timelines to follow, and communication, and things to talk. And we haven't done that, but we respectfully give the folks that have filed those complaints. We also train our leaders on that, and then we have new cases. And we can show that the outcomes of those grievances are confidential, and we have deep conversations with those folks, whether it ends in their satisfaction or not, those are more than our conversations. We try our hardest to ensure that they are that respectful and needed.
So I'm sure, as you, as I'm sure, we've had, we've looked at other assets, and I want you to be very clear, and continue to listen, be, uh, very intentional, maybe, while it was, has been, to move anything that they could, could have made, a position, or a location, uh, for them, given what is on our, our, our system. It was what it's all along, it's just to ensure that while we are cheaper, I believe it's still a value, it's still a rise, but not a good job. To defend, to figure out where the organization was, who the person was, what they were doing for us. And then we also have to provide, have to consider what you're like, and it's serious.
And I want to piggyback on people, which is particularly confidential. We expanded our company training process to ensure that everyone, the funniest, goes through, which we've just a few resources. Because as simple as who has single dental insurance and how we're paying them is put up protected information. So, we invented extra steps to ensure that the confidentiality of your information means it's tight and close to the people that have that information and that they're trained on it so they act accordingly. Nothing is used much. We also have built in procedures to check our systems. As we become more tech savvy, our systems are getting larger. So, it is on us to make sure that every corner of our system has the right systems and settings and reviews and it's that confidentiality is not compromised. We can also celebrate with our carriers that we work with, there were no breaches of confidentiality. While that doesn't fall on us, we're still responsible at the end of the day to help staff through those instances of confidentiality. 4.9, we spent a lot of time on this, ensuring that compensation and benefits are here to attract and retain our staff. And this is a celebration of our referendum. Again, what we were able to accomplish with our referendum really ensures that while we have an amazing place to work, people are also staying because of compensation and benefits. Really amazing results this year with our exit survey is that compensation is not in the top three reasons why someone is leaving, nor is it in the top five, it is soundly in the middle, it is far higher. And benefits are the second to last reason why they're leaving. That knows that the weakness that you have about us to make compensation benefits has really helped them to fully engage and they're not leaving because of compensation. Our turnover also makes our expectation of less than 12%. What you will notice in our indicators though is that we're employees that have higher turnover and lower pay. And that is a combination of a whole lot of things. Some of it is because of the job that folks are in, there's higher turnover and some are lower. Other reasons, we see a lot of senior people are leaving because of personal reasons, yeah, reasons. Those are hard things to do. But we have maintained that our turnover is under that 12%. We also know that there's a little bit of healthy turnover. While we don't want it to be too high, we know that sometimes that is in alignment with making sure that people who leave from the work that we're doing will align with our mission and.
Just a question right there, can you, like, why do we say that we brought 12%? With something that we did before, it's sort of, for a number of years. What was that 12%? So, it's like, here's a question. Does it mean, is that the state average, is it? Is that my basis number, is that what 20 years?
That's my guess, I'm very confused.
It's a good number, I have to say. As we, as we're looking at where we're at, I think, just kind of broadly, here we saw a huge difference. It's been, it's like, terrible to see what it is, but it's helping come over and back and it's sort of, so it's very real number. For the size of the, the age group.
And for the teacher shortage, we have so many other districts that are trying to recruit our staff. It's one of the big mistakes. I don't know though, I think it's fair to say this, like, you know, we want to look at changing, helping grow. And we about our academy changes. We don't know what is, how he might be taking his way up, but we're still waiting for it.
I wonder if for our next workshop, if it might just be useful to see some historical numbers on what the last 5 or 10 years looked like for voluntary. Just to put some context to your number. If that's easy.
Four point twelve goes into the communication piece of work. It's critically important in the success of the district. In what we see as how we communicate with employees, help employees navigate the reality of it. And what we can say is that we again communicated through fellow changes to all of our employees, through handbooks and through ad and all the processes. Four point twelve, we can't do this, is a hard one. There are employees that go through the process of disagreeing. Those are really hard conversations. Everyone needs human as possible for this. So what they'll see with indicators is you're gonna see letters in there and templates. But that's missing this piece of the human interaction. So it is a guaranteed promise that any time a person is working through a written warning, that they are meeting with the committee and their supervisor at that point to really review and then go back to that field, how we need to do better, and answer any questions. Because those are some of those hardest pieces of a person's career and you still want to be able to ensure that they follow as a person. And then finally, four point thirteen, the superintendent may not retaliate against an employee for initiating a legitimate complaint. We'll see here again, we had one complaint this year. We will see some examples of that. And we'll see how we looked through it confidentially. We did it with the utmost respect of the person who had some concerns. Not not with Dr. 30, but respect and empathy. And we looked through that too. And again, at the end of the day, human resources is about being human. It's not about being a member of one. And what I want you to see in four point one three and all of these other pieces where we show this is that we are elevating our employees and we are cooperating with the process to ensure that we're doing it.
So we look at it here, so this is the thing is we talk about, we focus to the deal of us that we're seeing on the bill today that everyone is building policies and improving the performance. And I think I know who was here before we developed this. So really just to highlight that in the first two-year process, the co-working, the data, the writing policies, we really put in systems in place. This is capturing kind of the end result. And it's a pretty high definition and it's a whole amount of information. But it's not capturing all the things that we've done to build the systems we're running previously. So we're going to just highlight that and think because it's incredibly gratifying for us to be able to see the details, a community, the details. I mean, this is the transparency that this trust is just coming to the fore. And I just insert work to see how things are looking. So that work, that isn't captured, it really did that recovery on our assets.
I feel that, because I think the other board members in the room, the various discussions, they're not necessarily in the board members much. You know, it was, I think, really, I don't wanna say frustrated, but like, whatever, we do those conversations and they all put it down, they'll put it all the stuff that they put down, one sentence that's supposed to guide. But I think we had a lot of conversations about like, you know, hey, this is going to work, this is, how you go trust, you know, with your staff, when you need to be transparent. And we'll put it down in one sentence, be defined later by the admin, even stretch out the policies and whatnot. And to see it here like, fully fleshed out. But I think what's important to put up here is not all of this evidence and any transparency, seeing the systems work, but you can also see that trust being built. The very first indicator to go last year from a fifty percent response rate for staff feeling value or not how the question is raised, to sixty-five percent. You know, that's normally some sort of a lagging indicator of reliability of trust in working relationship. To see it right there with fifty percent increases by any stretch of whatever doubt that allows is statistically significant. It's just a profound affirmation of all the work that's gone in and taken that one emphatic sentence that we argued about for how long, you do it three summers ago, and then actually putting that in the data, the work commitment. It's just really, this is a really effective, fun and rewarding report for me to read. You know, it's part of all the evidence of that, but like, not really. I think you could see that process happening. You know, like, I just wanna highlight that at the same time.
But I love during the interview process that you have a statement about it, that you have a question, and like, so that advocates no upswing, whether it be women's or men's. And I think that the statement a lot of organizations, because you let me see, they it's not included, I said, in the process of getting topics, lies later with that, I think, once it's a more private, we want to allow them to do it. So I think that's good. And it all says, please, funny.
Okay. Again, to the question. All of those.
I was gonna say. You decide.
That's fun.
I can't speak for Joe. I would love to, I would love to. Glad, dude. I know a lot of works that appreciate.
It's all part of you until it's four o'clock and I didn't argue about it. Where our time goes in our sentences. Everybody else goes, yeah.
But I think, I mean, I think the work that we did as a board was intentional, but it's going to be brought to life. And in a really way that like, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's so gratifying to see it brought to life, it's a beautiful way, especially when you're just a kid. You're taking care of the people that are there to take care of kids. That's such a, and the fact that we recognize that that's your, your job is such a, it is very important to see a girl, you know, maybe for days and time. So much work is going into building these systems. And that's, I think, the part for all of us in the board table, where do you see evidence from that? Kind of just pushing systems in place. And that is not the case. And I really wanna highlight the work of the R S E R, there is huge, um, the quality of these systems. These are the pivot, these are the priority.
Mary, I'll add to that. Not only, you know, the, I think, the board and using its governance model, this is board governance in action. Much of this work is easy to put to the side when the day-to-day fire cops up. Even just the example of a hundred percent of our employees being evaluated and getting feedback, that, that is, in some areas, an easy system for a shelf that we place. It's checks and balances. It's all of the people that have to do that work once the system's put in use. And it is work that can be put to the side without the systems or the accountability that all of you do. So, and I know many of our employees just appreciate getting the feedback, in the form of an evaluation, because they haven't had it in so long. I see some head nods. In my previous life, I did twenty-four, twenty-five years without a school district. I got it out of the other place. And I think it's easy to put that off, even for the employees that are doing it. Lots of, lots of hands on this to get this done.
I think when we were also back in the early days, like, some of, you know, two summers ago, with that company, the taking care of our staff is like a critically important piece for every member. And so if we sort of, we think, making sure that we're all on board, how do we want to ensure our staff goes careful? And so that's the result of this policy. And we're really in the light of the firm, this is what I'm impressed to see. I think the part that does it count sort of, the beginners, the really, the medical evidence that we always, board members have, that people coming up and saying something about how it's difficult and how, I think, like, things are just going in the right direction. You know, it's been the most interesting aspect of things that you would be able to do. So you think of coming directly to us, and you're doing all that just to produce the first steps of, um, feedback, you raise a red, pretty exciting to see, so.
Seems to, that's a bit of a, you know, you have a lot of conversations, you know.
So I'm trying to tell it, sort of, like I got, because we've got the, we, one of the things that we're doing, the, the new hire interviews, how does that information come in, you know, and, 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 but, that's a good, that's a good question.
So, I wanted to try and just make your question. What are we doing with the interview questions to help you get, who do you hire?
No, uh, you know, how, kind of, the check in? Yeah, like, feedback. So that's very good. Just back at it, so, but, what is that about?
This actually gives me so much joy, because those surveys come in on a daily basis. So they are reviewed as we come back. And one thing that I do every day is if someone, they rank us from one to five, a variety of different reasons. And if anyone rates a new one, it's, it's a new, direct. To ask them, you know, how you doing, what can I help you do, that are male survey questions. And I met someone last week who said she didn't understand her preference. And at the end of that meeting, I'm like, I'm not hungry. And there was just so much great for this. So first, it's that immediate review to make sure that there's nothing outstanding, because I don't want someone to have such a bad experience that they could be starting a better job than they are. But then this past summer was the first time that we had enough data shared with our leaders during our leadership institute. And it was really just informational for that first time. We have a big set of new hires coming through, where you see those ninety-day surveys, and we act, how we, like, in this review. So we actually, that will be again, shared with our leaders. We see some trends that our folks not understanding, policies in the building, we see trends, just beginning relationships with their leaders. So those are the two that I wanna call out. And when we see that with a, with a, with a specific building or leader, it's really, if someone doesn't feel like they're building a relationship with you, you need to. And those are the things I will see in the next couple weeks, and we'll address those for you.
And also insurance that we have conversation on, whether we're feedback to the second grade provided was inside the survey, or working with the building, or whether it's our system, just in your office, or getting access, or not, don't do this, or do different conversations or awareness, you know, and that's what we do, so, as awareness, you you not realize that, oh, because I'm not connecting with the district, and that I was just there, and, you know, missing support, and just having some conversations. I, things are moving so fast that I just don't want to come and ask questions, and I sit down, have a long conversation with you. Because I can understand, um, the base of, of this overall, it's awareness, so you know, so knowing that it's a possible issue, and you can address, what you, and both of them have heard and guided them to help. This survey meant something, realistically, and the organization is truly impressive, the weather's truly impressive, they're helping you solve problems, so.
Anything else? There are a few questions that just, colleagues are coming in late, and they go to the state of staff, or, or, for, for, apparently, about, stay late and just call it out. So you were talking about a survey that spoke really of hires, is that, okay. I was gonna, because I just got the parent comments survey from Stan, it's like a quick touch point, refreshless survey, but I think the sense comes out of quarter-ish. And I'm wondering if, like, verging those two things that are, what you're talking about, and that experience, if there's something that staff members, all staff, that are tiny little checkpoints? And I think what could possibly maybe fall is in which of the, this year, some of our states that leadership has been a lot of change in some of our buildings, and just how we're figuring out what folks and their staff are doing with, how always align and kind of integral commentary. I think staff in general, to echo where it's coming, will also share concerns more readily, which I think also speaks to the integrity of this team, because previously the staff were free to share when they were concerned about things. But yeah, just wondering about what mini checkpoints the staff was, is just a little comment to say.
So the attempt to just, they, clearly, uh, the works that, like, began to do that, kind of like a pilot stage as a new leader, you know, new space, and, 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 sharing that, maybe positive, that others, like, concept, you know, around here, and, 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 and,[1064.14]